Go ahead and get started. It's a couple minutes after five. And we'll call the meeting to order. And this is just our work session before Thursday meeting. Our Thursday meeting is going to be at North Middle School at 5:30. And we'll just go on down to the minutes of the prior board meetings. Everybody's had a chance to review that in your pockets. And if there are any amendments this Thursday. There's nothing for discussion on the prior meeting minutes. And we'll just go on down to the treasures report.
Thank you. This month, nothing significant, however, I did want to make mention of one thing in expenses. That this month, there was $492,630 paid to E's Insurance. I know some of the, some of the governor's focus was on administrative expenses in the past year. That's something that accounts for, you know, just 8.6% of our admin expenses. So, I mean, things like that get lumped into administrative expenses. So, it's not necessarily all salaries and benefits. So, I mean, I just wanted to make that, that clear. Otherwise, really just a good month. Our accounts payable was down. Our revenues were up a little bit. And the forecast looks good. I do not, not on the. That's mixed in with the fixed expenses.
Thanks. Are any other discussion on the treasures report? If not, we can go down to bills and salaries, payments.
Thank you again. This month, we had about $330,000 that we're going to bring before you. It's mainly a general fund expenses, very small, $37,000 in Fund Two. Construction was $819,000. That was just a payment of a small bill. And then debt service was about $9,000. That was just a small payment that we had this month. Otherwise, nothing really significant.
Is there any discussion on the bills and salaries? If not, we'll go down to the school bills. Okay. And then we'll move on down to Mr. Davis with his superintendent.
I will hit just two or three things tonight, so to kind of balance the meetings out a little bit. I did give you my growth plan. I know as we're talking, you basically want me to stay with the culture thing. So, you have that in front of you, which is, you know, talking with community, working with our folks. I did add stressing soft skills, which is something we're doing. I think it falls right in with the culture as well. So, there's no action needs to be taken on this, but I just wanted to make you aware that's what I'll be working on. If you need me to add anything, feel free to tell me and I'll be glad to do that. We may have an addition to the agenda on Thursday night. I think Penny is, is Penny not here today, but she did, she wanted me to let you know. Longest is working on a textbook purchase, which is a little, little different. They're trying to get some approval from the state, so it may or may not be in. So, we'll let you know. May ask you to add that on Thursday. Chad, I think we're correct here. I'm correct in that the panic buttons, they are in the process of being put in at North Middle, South Middle, and the Renaissance Center. Working on that. Those hopefully will be operational soon. As you know, they're already East and West and operational there. And then we'll move on to the elementaries after we get this done. And I'm going to, go ahead and let Eric tonight go over the energy report, because again, just kind of balance the meetings out. So, Eric. They'll also be done in the elementaries eventually. How far away are we, Chad? Do you know if the middle schools, I mean, they're still close? So, East and West are operational. Middle School and Renaissance before fall break, we hope. And then we'll move on to elementaries and hopefully before Christmas or sooner or later.
Thank you again. This is the, just the energy report for fiscal year 18. This is for board policy, 5.3. So, overall, energy use last, this past year was 11,206,000 kilowatt hours. That's a, that's an increase over fiscal year 17. However, the average temperature was a little bit higher this year, so that's, that's important to note. It really wasn't a function of, you know, people overusing it or anything like that. It was just, it was purely the, the systems had to work a little bit harder this year. So, the changes in the kilowatt hours overall, we went up about 2%. With the train systems, it was an average, we actually still decreased with those systems. So, we averaged almost 3% decrease with the train systems. Bremen was one of our big winners this year. They got, they decreased by almost 8%. Central City, 4%. Greenville Elementary was almost four and three quarters. Actually, they had an increase. And that was, some of that was just, just working with the systems and those things. South Elementary had about a 1% increase this year. And North Middle had almost a 9% drop. So, North Middle has been one that has been really just making strides annually. The Honeywell Systems, they had increased about 7.28%. Longest had a 9% increase. South Middle had a 13% increase. A lot of that is having to do with, we're needing to run the, the units in that gym frequently. Really, all the time. We don't turn those off mainly because of the humidity control over the summer. We don't want to have an instance where we have to replace the floor again at a $120,000 cost. So, West, or excuse me, East Campus went up about a percent. West Campus, 5.5%. The central office went up about 7.5%. So, our cost savings data. This year, the actual cost, about 1.14 million. Had we trended that, that cost based on previous usage and increases, it would have been about $1.2 million. So, I mean, we, even from the, over the year-to-year savings, been about well over $60,000. So, those are, that's, that's not actual dollars coming off. That's unrealized bills that we would have had to pay otherwise. Makes sense?
Did you do the negotiation mostly, or is it, you had to?
A lot, a lot of the negotiation was done with, through KSBA and going to the, the Energy Commission. Sorry, excuse me, Utilities Commission. So, you know, a lot of the energy vendors did have input on that. But the majority of the negotiations for rate increases were done through KSBA.
You had to stay on, right?
Yeah. So, it was, I mean, but it was beneficial, so. Does anyone have any questions?
Obviously, we've got some inefficient systems in the East and West that we, it's going to cost a lot to get to where we want to be. Obviously, we know that's coming up.
Is that a lot of the?
Absolutely.
Every time you're done and on and off and repairs, you know.
Another interesting piece of information is that, you know, this is kind of the law of diminishing returns that we've got going on. The first year, we had 2.5% decrease, then it jumped to 9%. And then the previous fiscal year was about 2% decrease. And then this year was, you know, our first increase that we've had in, in three fiscal years, or four fiscal years, excuse me. So, thank you.
Thank you. We can go on down personnel actions, and we can go over any questions on that. Should go over that Thursday.
Sherry was able to, I think, you shouldn't have, I think, obviously, Tuesday. So, I was the first month, it's not a little bit as far as percentage, not much. Enrollment, it's not going to look as good compared to last year, first month. When you look at the, where we were last year, the end of school.
What are the attendance reports, Melody?
Shows you my age. No. It shows you asleep.
Hey, he's just really wanting to talk to you.
Shows you asleep.
Personnel actions, Miss Frowning.
Only came in in the third.
That's funny. Okay. All right. We'll go on down to our board action items for discussion. Consider the South Elementary textbook plan. Is this the one you're helping out?
No, this is the one we know is good to go. The longest one is the one, maybe ready Thursday, I'm not counting. Everything will be in order on, on this one. It's good to go.
Okay.
Say my mom roughly 20, 21.
Whatever.
Yes, that's the textbook's on.
And we'll go down to the approval, approving the contract with the A-plus leadership for the aspiring administrator program. Is there any questions on that? Contracts included, so. Okay. We'll go on down to the 2018-19 student fees from Millenberg South Elementary.
This was just a late addition to the fees that were.
And then the scanning services provided by VRMS.
Thank you. Really, this is a, we put out a request for proposal for scanning services. We, we only got one back. However, it's a, it's a group that one of their new employees actually worked for the Archives, Kentucky Archives. And they've gone through and looked at all the items that we can, that we need to scan and the items that don't have to be scanned. The original proposal they gave to me was about double this, but we pulled back. And we're going to really want to do, get some of the mission critical items. Another county that I know of had, had some damage to their, their items this past year. And they spent $200,000 just correcting it. So, this is an opportunity. We're running out of room in that building, quite literally. It's becoming increasingly more difficult to find the, the records that we need. And anytime we start going back, we, the payroll records have to be kept indefinitely. That's for IRS purposes. So, what we're, we're wanting to do is get these scanned, then get them microfilmed. And the microfilm actually will not be stored on site. Once we get it microfilmed, we send it to Frankfurt. And they, they put it in their vault. And then all the other, all the other documents will be through the, the document management software.
How long is this contract? Is it, is it a one-time fee of $75,000?
Basically, we're asking for authorization up to $75,000. So, really, we're going to look at the mission critical items that, you know, we're trying to scale back as much as humanly possible. So, I mean, it could be less, but it, I don't believe it'll be a one-time payment. This is just to scan the, the items that are in. Yeah, that are in that, in that building.
Just going forward if you're scanning them as of right now.
And a lot of the documents that, moving forward, we will scan them. And then if we ever have to go back and, and look at the older items that are in there to scan again, we're just trying to spread out costs if we have. So, the original proposal, about $140,000. And I said, no. Sorry, we negotiated that down, actually.
We just reduced the type of items that were.
We, we reduced the type, but we all, I also went back and told them, look, I need to get as much done. But I'm, we're only going to spend this amount. So, they're, they're going beyond what we originally proposed to, to us in terms of the scope. Not, not in terms of, like, we're pulling back the scope a bit, but they're giving us more than what just cutting it in half has been, if that makes sense.
How many of them are there?
There's documentation back to the 20s in there.
Is it seven years for the IRS and everybody?
The IRS, the Archives folks have told us that we need to keep that in pretty much indefinitely. Payroll records are pretty much indefinite. And that's the majority of it. So, anything else that we can get rid of, you know, they'll, they'll let us know and we'll get it threaded. So, we'll just keep the minimum.
Is there any questions regarding that? Go on down to the docuWare records, management software.
So, this, this kind of ties into this. However, I've also been working with as many departments in the central office as we can to have this software branch across just, not, not just work with finance. So, I've worked with Melody and her team extensively, and we think we can replace about $11,000 worth of software. And it's also going to help Abby when we put out contracts and those sorts of things. It's, it's nice in that there's a, there's a bit of work on the front end where there's going to be some document mapping. But anytime she scans anything, right now, she's having to put barcodes on it. Is that correct, Sherry?
Barcodes don't work personally there.
Okay. So, so this one, what it'll do is if we have a transcript from Western, it'll pick up all the fields that are, and it'll know it's a Western Kentucky University transcript. And it'll scan it and throw it right in that person's file. It's a, it's a pretty intuitive software, so.
And it's going to be an annual cost each year?
It will be.
What's the annual cost now?
Right now, it's, it's about $11,000. And this is going to be $15,000. However, it, right, but it's also, we're, the finance department's gaining a software that we've never had prior, so.
That'll put down on the stress of workload and so forth.
Right. Yeah. We're, we're going to gain a lot of efficiencies in my department alone to help, to justify this.
I think he was saying, it says replace two software systems.
There's two software systems that are currently used in, in, in personnel, excuse me, that, that store some of the, some of the documentation that goes, that gets tied with everyone's personnel record. So, it's going to replace those systems. So, we're getting rid of about two, two pieces of software, correct, Melody? In order to, to gain.
So, our cost will be $15 for this, but then what was the cost of the other two that we're getting rid of?
$11,000.
That's one time.
It, it'll be, it'll be a net, net $4,000.
Here, but one time, $15,000.
Right.
When was the last time we remember the system was changed? Just, you know, I know we operate in Westmore, something.
Let me start using saves.
So, the $11,000 is not an annual fee?
Well, it's, it's annual that we pay this, this company now. So, we'll lose that, we'll lose that annual fee and pick up this one.
So, every year be a net $4,000?
Correct.
Any further discussion? Move on down to the purchase of a pickup truck for the maintenance department.
We are going to ask to pull that one off. This time, the, the quote that was given is no longer valid. It's for 2018 model. They can no longer get 2018 models. The 2019 models will not be able to be ordered until November. We'll have, and their pricing isn't firm yet. So, we're probably going to, we're going to try to bring it back either next month or, probably next month, so we can get it ordered in November. We won't receive it until January or February, but that's usually about when, when we, when we start getting the snows. And that's when we'll put the. It's very good pricing, but. Yep. And, and they, they look for one on the lot to, you know, to, to quick fix. And it's about $14,000 more. We said no. So, I think that's being prudent with the money, so. So, that, we, we're going to pull that off.
All right. Let's move on to the next item. Approval law enforcement officer job description.
Okay. So, we've been working with our insurance agents to, to start to get a policy that will cover our law enforcement officer for carrying a weapon. We've worked with KDE, our underwriter, and, and legal to get this job description correct. I've also worked with KSBA and how we needed to word things and where it needed to be placed. They recommended that it get done through the job description. This all, this basically does all the checkboxes that the underwriter was, was wanting to have complete in order to get this policy in place. And so, this is what, what was created.
So, the only thing that should be added here would be that done, because they're already insured for others.
Correct. This, this does not fall under our general liability, just because of the nature of it. So, that's, it's, it's a rider policy.
Any discussion on that? And move down to the approval for the carrying of a weapon for the law enforcement officer.
So, KRS statute says that the board has to approve that. What we've done is we've worded it to where it's the law enforcement officer is the only one that carries a weapon, so it's not opening it up to anyone else. And that's all we're asking is that you guys approve allowing the law enforcement officer position to carry the weapon.
How many are, the new one, three, one?
Well, currently, one. Because everyone else is employed under other local law enforcement. So, Ringville Police, Sheriff's Department, and then Central City.
Are there any schools that law enforcement carry? In terms of law enforcement police officers?
They, they do. But really, it's, it's mainly because they were, they operate under the purview of a, of a local law enforcement officer agency, like a police department or the sheriff's department.
Is there any discussion on this?
So, they can never carry, always present my.
No, they, they can, I mean, but they're not employed by the, the Board of Education.
So, we'll just have one that's employed by the board and the others are covered by the police department.
Correct. And they're covered under their policies. This is, this is.
So, we got four altogether. I want to see all four, right?
Yes, sir. Correct. Yep. Okay. Absolutely.
Move on down to the next item. Consider addition to the 2018-19 salary schedule for the Millenberg South Elementary right here.
Thank you. Really, all this is the, we're just adding that South Elementary wanted to add a certified teacher that could do work afterward, after the, after school. I spoke with KT RS, ran, ran this through them. This is how they recommended that I do this. And basically, what we're doing is we're asking that, that you allow the, at a rate of 10.65 an hour.
Is there any discussion? Go down to the working budget for 18 working.
As you know, I, I sent you all a significant amount of documentation that, that I go through every, every time I create any of our budgets. I work with all the departments, look at budget, I look at the budget line by line. There's 3,000 lines in our expense column. So, we go through each of them individually. We look at them over the course of time, what the budget to actual, what the actual trend has been. We also look at, is there something in that line item that, that's going to come up this, this fiscal year? So, tonight, I'll just, I'll kind of hit some of the hot points. You know, our revenue line item changes. We increased the property tax by revenue by 4%. I did revise that. I spoke with, with, with one of y'all today and discussed what the, basically, I'd taken the, the property tax item that was on the report that we get from the state, and I applied the 95%. However, looking back at other, the trends, it was, it was lower than that. But when you combine all the property taxes, it actually equals up to that, that larger number. So, it was just a, an oversight in that, in that portion. I decreased the, the SEAC, you know, about 3.45%, which was the same, really, pretty much they, they fell in line with what was on the tentative budget. And again, I adjusted any on behalf amount, amounts that were proportioned to the salary expense. So, with the all, all of our funds, it totals about $69, $69 million. With that, 59 million of that being general fund. Special revenue, which all are grant funds, about 4.6 million. Food service, about 3.4. Debt service is 3.7. Building fund and capital outlay, they're about 2.1 million together. They actually cover all of our debt service payments. I know debt service is 3.7 million. However, there's a lot of on behalf payments that are made by the state on our behalf. So, it's a really, it's a positive thing that we're, that our building fund and our capital outlay cover the cost of all of our debt service payments.
All of it, you pay a little bit difference.
Excuse me?
Did they all of it?
I think we have about $15,000 left over. So, that gets dropped back into general. Our general fund revenues, local revenue is about 15 million, our, our, which, that includes our TVA funds. State revenue is about $19 million. That's, that's about 18.8 million of that is SEAC, SEAC dollars. Our beginning balance, about 16.1 million. There's on behalf payments of 8.4 million. So, in the SEAC. So, in the SEAC, it was a decrease of about $553,000 this year based on enrollment. Then, I'll just go through the expense line item. I'm sorry.
The SEAC decrease, $100?
About 553,000.
How many kids, how many kids that make it?
It's about 140, about 140. I'm sorry?
You said 3.45%?
Right.
We're hoping that that's not going to be that high, but we'd rather project, we American, I thought.
What are you now?
I'm sorry?
What are you, where are you sitting now?
We're about 110 away from when we started last year.
So, you're keeping the...
But we're also not as, we're about, I think it was 17 kids from where we are when school ended last year, so down, but still, that's not near what it could have been, so...
And I've worked with the state on terms of trying to get it to where it's a, we don't want to drop it so significantly that we're under budgeting tremendously, but however, we think we're pretty much in line. And really, what it's been is that, you know, towards the end of the year when they give us our final projection, we've either been right on line or they've given us a little bit of a bump. So, there have been previous years where we've dropped, you know, 70, 80,000 over the last three payments that we received. So, we're trying to prevent things, those scenarios from happening, and it's worked out really well for the last couple of years, so that's what we've done there.
And one of the few positives from the state, we will say that, that they did bump SEAC per child, $19. So, what was that, 90 or 100,000?
It was an $81,000 increase.
81,000, so that sort of doesn't offset all his...
No. It was, you know, just, really, you took the $19 base adjustment and you multiply it by the current enrollment, that's really, it's 81,000. It's probably a little bit higher, but when we're just looking at raw numbers, you know, we can't predict what percent of those are going to be higher reimbursement kids, so that's where we're kind of looking at that. Our expense line item changes. The salary expense was increased by 2.5%. I adjusted those finalized numbers after the first couple of payrolls. One of the interesting things, when we looked at the models back in March, I took the numbers that I gave to you all and I compared them against the annualized numbers that, after the first payrolls, and I put that 2% buffer in there, you know, to cover the cost of PD days, tutoring days, and the number that was in March was about 98.98% accurate. So, I think that was, I think, and I showed Rajiv, actually, he was here one day. It was, it was pretty, pretty good. I mean, I think we're, I think we'll stick with some of those numbers, so...
And since you mentioned March, can I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I know at our last meeting, there was some discussion that we weren't going through the budget thoroughly enough or, and Robbie and Eric invited all the board members into their office and gave us time we went into, I tell you, if we wanted to, and the majority of us went and went through this detail by detail. And I found my notes of that. There's a salary schedule, there's four or five different scenarios if you did raises, but the CERS phase in or the enrollment drops and textbook funds were eliminated. This was done at our April meeting and I know the general assembly, I think, was just probably finishing up right when we had our meeting, so there was a lot of changes there at the end, but, and then, you know, safety, I think it was alluded to that we didn't really, hadn't talked about that. There's a page of discussion notes that they told us in those meetings on safety and it's pretty well what we did. You know, we were doing the property tax calculation and those considerations. So, I just want you to know that, you know, we are, we are looking at the numbers.
We're always kept in a loop, basically, in that respect, you know. Agree or not agree, but, you know, everything is communicated well.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I did get a bottle of water there, by the way.
Well, I took it out of your last paycheck.
No, that's...
I took it out of your last reimbursement, Rajiv, so...
Awesome.
Yeah, their hotel priced $5 a bottle.
Yes.
I did adjust the CERS and KTRS numbers based on payroll and what the finalized numbers were. So, it was about, budgetarily, it was about $400,000 increase like we did talk about in the tax. I think it'll probably come in a little less just based on payroll, so we try to budget just to worst case scenarios. That's where a lot of line items that you'll see, they may be increased, but they're not unjustifiably increased. A lot of it has to do with, okay, we've got a plan for if something happens, we have to have the money budgeted. I'd much rather have that money budgeted and not need it than need it and not have it budgeted because coming to you and saying that I've under budgeted by X number of dollars is something I really don't ever want to do. So, we did budget another $200,000 to vehicles and transportation. I don't know that we're going to get another deal this year, but if we do, if we do, we're going to come to you all. The one thing I will say is that we are kind of caught up in terms of our plan with purchasing buses. Actually, we're even one ahead since Julie did get to purchase a special education bus with her Medicaid funds, which, again, those are funds that are generated by her department. I think it's only fair that they reap the benefits. So, I budgeted $50,000 to vehicles and maintenance. That's to help cover the truck and if there's any unforeseen, you know, something else goes out or anything like that. So, we just want to have those funds available, not necessarily that we'll need them, but just wanted to have that out there. Again, we allocated funds to security cameras, South Middle and East Campus. Some of those have, I think South Middle's already done, correct? Okay. There's East Campus that they're going to do. If there's funds left over, you know, we can reallocate some of those to get more cameras in expedited, but again, we, as Matt has discussed with you all, you know, we spread those out in order to make sure that we're not putting in the same technology everywhere so it's not outdated all at once. Increased security service line item to $90,000. That's for the cost of an additional SRO, should we ever look at that again. Doors and radios. Radios are something that even a conference that Melody and I went to, they, the HR director from Marshall County came and talked to us and they said that is something that every person in the, you know, every administrator in the central office should have their own radio and have it on them all times so that, you know, we're all part of an action plan. Well, you know, knowing those things, if cell towers, you know, you start bombarding them, it's going to make it harder and harder to call, so they did suggest radios. I increased repairs and maintenance by 434,000 for the entryway security items that we discussed. That's not necessarily where it's going to get paid out of, but that's a good way to show it in the line item budget. That way, you all can see, okay, 87,000, I believe is what it was for East Campus, 87,000 for West Campus, those sorts of things. That way, you can see what line item got increased. So, and then again, we reduce and reallocate anywhere we can. If there's areas where, you know, it hasn't been spent in a couple of years, we go back and we look at that and we say, why did we budget for this? Okay, can we pull that off? Do we feel comfortable doing that? Yes, we will pull it off. If not, then we're just going to continue on. So, what sort of questions do you have?
This donation of $1 million, who is that for?
The donation? That's from the Gatten family.
I think we used some of it?
We used some of it, so it's not, but there's other portions of that, you know. There's other items that'll go into construction.
So many things that could have been trimmed a few years ago, you know, when we were a little, little more things where you could get to. You know, you went through everything, what, 2014 or 15 or whatever, so there's not nearly as much now as there was then. The thing we have to do now, and it's hard, is the staffing because our class sizes are bigger and it's harder when your class sizes are bigger. So, you know, we've got folks that would really like for class sizes or put another eight in there and all. You try to balance the need to do that for the kids with keeping that number in check because when you add that, that's adding it every year. So, that's, you know, we cut some more staffing this year as our enrollment drops. That's true. That's one place where we can't cuddle, even though we lose a lot more than we gain financially. That's something that we're really keeping an eye on, what percentage of our total budget is staffing? If you get up over 90 and then 92 or 3 or wherever they were, 95, I think, it was, that's unmanageable.
It was significant.
So, those, you know, the days passed have made, made us a lot more efficient and leaner now, and in most ways, that's good. Staffing, it does hurt. I mean, that more people is a good thing, but it's something we're trying to balance, keep an eye on.
And our bonding is right little, around a million now that we have available?
Yeah, that's right. It's right around a million. We have some SFCC funds that are available and in the next couple of years, we should be, some more of our bonding is going to be, our capacity is going to be coming back because we're going to be paying off some of our bonds. In the next six years, we should have another significant amount that we're going to be able to do. The big thing that affects our bonding capacity right now, though, is enrollment does affect that, though, you know, so as we go down, it kind of squeezes a little bit more, but otherwise, we're doing really well.
Of course, we're going to sum that up as we get into this east and west.
Right.
Matt would probably agree, there's probably some needed east for some upgrades in AC and heat. He lives it.
Yes.
Our CDs that we invested in, are they starting to mature? What was the...
I've got, I've got one that's maturing in two years, was the...
Two years, okay.
Was the shortest term. This year, it was approximately 80,000 in interest that was gained, so I don't have that specific number in front of me, but offhand, I think it was close to $80,000, so...
Locked in.
Excuse me?
Locked in for two years.
And we've got, I mean, our longest one that we've got out there is five years, but it's, you know, it's got a much larger interest rate and we've got it, so they're rolling off.
That's a bigger amount, right? Larger amount.
And they're rolling off in a time, so that way, we have access to those funds.
I want to thank you, you folks, for the way you've handled this. I know as you've gone through it, you've had questions, you've called, and, you know, we're trying to get those answers, so please continue to as you look through it more. We'll get you answers, so we're all on the same page here. That's where we're heading, so appreciate the way you've handled that.
Is there any further questions on the working budget? And then we'll just go down to our board consent agenda items. Since there was just one that needed to be signed before Thursday, so we'll get that. And if there's no questions on the board consent agenda item, I'll need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Will.
Thank you.
Second by Mr. Bowers. All favor adjourned. Say aye. Aye. All opposed, adjourned.